Welcome to the Board of Select meeting June ninth, two thousand twenty six o'clock P M. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty eight, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand twenty order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Board of Select will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southborough's website, W W W dot Southborough Town dot com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at W W W dot Southborough Town dot com slash remote meetings. No in person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Call the meeting to order. All selectmen are present. Kathy, do you want to go through that to get your meeting started and call to order?
So I'm calling advisory meeting to order at the same time. I don't think I've got to read that again unless someone disagrees.
I was advised by Jim that last night when we joined the planning board meeting that I needed to read it as well, in addition to Dawn, so.
Actually, I memorized it myself.
I go by memory, too.
I guess pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty eight, section eighteen, and governor's March fifteenth, two thousand twenty order imposing imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Advisory Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southborough's website at W W W dot Southborough Town dot com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at W W W dot Southborough Town Town dot com front slash remote meetings. No in person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite our best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
All right. Uh, so Kathy, if you are in agreement, I propose that we go through the list of the separate budget items that total the twenty five thousand three hundred and six dollar difference. And through that discussion, we should be able to then touch upon the hiring dates that we discussed at our last meeting as well. And hopefully that gets us to to a point where we can conclude and get ready for Saturday. Do you agree with that?
I do.
All right. Uh, does everybody have that information? You want me to put it up on the screen so everybody sees it and we're all working off the same document? Why don't I try sharing? Vanessa, I need to have the ability to share my screen if I'm going to do it. So can people see that? Starts with Conservation Commission, three thousand one ten?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and I guess as I go through these, Kathy, so these, this list of budget items, you, with the exception of the amounts listed, advisory is in agreement with the two percent budget cuts recommended by the Board of Select, correct?
It is correct.
So this first item is Conservation Commission. The difference is three thousand one hundred and ten dollars. That expense is for a minute taker. That advisory believes. So so that this three thousand one hundred and ten dollars covers a person to take minutes during Conservation Commission hearings, correct?
Yes.
So I think part of our thinking on this was that there could potentially be other staff resources that could be utilized for this. Uh, and thinking more about it, I'll just make one observation. We could potentially be having Park Central restart. I know that there are documents that have been submitted to Conservation Commission on this. And with the legal history that that particular project has had, it may actually not be a bad investment on the town's part to invest three thousand dollars in accurate records and minute taking, given the litigious nature of that of that particular project. But I'd certainly be welcome to hear what other board members might think about that.
Brian?
Go ahead, Sam.
I think that's a valid point. The other side of that one, particularly the Park Central, is that part of the issue is that our conservation agent is spending, should be spending more time out in the field versus doing minutes and other administrative kind of things. And so particularly, again, if Park Central does get restarted, I think that greatly increases the demand on her time for field work here. So that's another reason why I think this is a good expenditure.
For the record, we agree that, and we've talked to them, if there is a town employee who has some idle time because of the virus, that if there is someone that can't take the minutes, that they will reduce their budget and won't allocate it elsewhere. So we've talked to to Conservation about that. They agreed. We've also gone back and checked the number of minutes that they need based on the meetings they think they've best scheduled. And this is a good number. This is not a rounded number. This is what we think they need for the meetings that we think they're going to have even in this pandemic era.
Any anyone else with thoughts, comments on this one? And I don't know how we want to, do we want to take a vote on, you know, positions on each one as we go through them, just to see where people stand, or do we want to wrap it all up at the end? How does my board want to do this?
Do it at the end.
I would prefer to do it at the end as well, Brian.
Okay. So no other discussion points on Conservation Commission line item? Hearing none. Uh, next is Recreation Line Item. Uh, looking to restore one thousand nine hundred and thirty seven in salary items. There had been a slight reduction in the salaries based on the selectman two percent budget.
And just to be clear, I probably should have worded this a little bit different. One employee agreed to not work twenty eight hours and the other agreed to not work twenty nine hours. And there's only two employees there. They had literally no other cause to cut but this.
Any comments from questions?
Hey, Brian, this is Marty.
Hi, Marty.
I just, I just find it an odd position for us to be taking that as a town. For instance, one of the arguments that's been posited for um, having a July, a July one start date for Youth and Family Services, as well as some of the other departments, is that 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 position is really, really needed as of July one. Again, putting aside differences of opinion about that, it doesn't seem that a similar inquiry has been done for recreation, just it's not fair. And I mean, one thing is pretty clear. There is not going to be the recreation programs, for instance, that we had this summer. And and the idea that the town is taking the position that there can't be, what strikes me as an incredibly modest reduction in hours. When again, the people who are going to be paying the salaries are, many of them are furloughed or not working. It's just an odd position for us to be taking. And, you know, particularly, and I don't know, you know, no one on the board has certainly advocated as part of a town strategy, but certainly an awful lot of businesses are adopting the approach that furloughs are good for them. Because in actual dollars, oftentimes, the employees end up making more money and the business, or in this instance, the town saves the money because of again, not having to pay the furloughed salary, but the but the employee is made whole or better. So again, for all those reasons, it's just, it is, it strikes me for for all of these items, it just strikes me as as that in some respects, advisory is advocating on behalf behalf of the departments. Um, when the departments have indicated that these are cuts that they can live with. Again, all of that is an is an odd construct to me.
So I would add to what Marty said that these two employers are not going to be able to draw unemployment because they're not cutting their hours enough to do that, so they won't be made whole. Advisory actually would support furloughing employees that could draw unemployment, but we haven't done that. So no town employee has been furloughed as far as we know. Um, so this is not a fertile, this is just asking two people not to get paid for some of their hours where no one else has been asked to do that. So I don't think we're advocating for a department. We just don't think that is a policy that's fair to these two people because they had nothing else in their budget that they could cut. So they did what they were asked to do. They cut exactly two percent from their salaries because that's all they had to cut. As far as their excess time, we spent a lot of time talking about using some of their excess time to fulfill the Youth and Family Services admin position for a while. Youth and Family Services made a pretty convincing case that the reason they don't want to do that is because they are going to be training a person that has a background in their area that is going to be exposed to very confidential information. So that if they were to use one of the rec people part time, they can't really do everything they want done. So they prefer to have their own person full time that they train, that they have vetted, et cetera. So they 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 listen to us and they would have accepted if they had no choice, but we did spend a lot of time talking to them about possibly using some of maybe excess time. I don't know that there's going to be excess time. You're right, they're not doing the summer camp program, but I think they've got, you listen to what Tim Davis said the other night to you guys when he did this update. I think they've got a lot going on, so I don't think that they are necessarily not going to be working full time, but I don't know that for a fact.
Sorry, Tim, you had a question or comment earlier?
I was gonna follow up what Kathy just said. I think this is more of a policy issue. If you want to look at a department because its service was impacted by COVID, that's not something we've done. If you want to have an across the board slash of hours, that is something that happens in industry. It's unwelcome, but it's fair. To me, this this policy sets a bad precedent. Because what you're doing is you're you're letting the departments choose to cut things like training or travel. And here you have a case where people are cutting hours because they don't have anything else. And the reason why I say it sets a bad precedence is because it encourages people to put more fluff in their budget in future years. So I would encourage you, if you wanted to look at cutting hours, to 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 find a different process for doing so.
Brian, you're on mute. Thank you, Sam. Sorry about that. So there's somebody that, I assume it's Kristin, that's you, if you could just identify yourself, name and address.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, it's Kristen Leval, twelve Southwood Drive. I'm also a member of the Rec Commission. I just wanted to point out something that somebody pointed out last week that if you think these people are probably going to be working less hours, that's not accurate. They will be working those hours because they had no other opportunity. This was the only place they could take it. And on a personal level, like just, I, you know, not speaking with the recreation, that does not seem like a fair move just because they don't have an excess budget, they can remove it elsewhere. If you listen to any of our recreation meetings recently, just because some things have stopped, planning for the future is that much more challenging. And, you know, we're facing losses to our our revenue as a result of the camp. We still want to obviously run programs in the fall, but that is going to be a much different picture. So there's a lot of time being put in to see how they can reopen safely. Many meetings, I know with all of you, a lot of planning to see how they operate. All of our programs, our activities in this new world. So if there is a belief that because camp's not running, these folks don't have anything to do, I strongly encourage you to listen in on some of our more recent meetings because there is an awful lot of effort being put in to make sure that as we can return to the new normal, that recreation is making sure that all safety measures are being executed in a lot of places. That might take more people. It's certainly taking them a lot more time to figure out how to successfully run the programs that we depend on so heavily for the revenue that keeps the department running, except for the two items in their budget, which is their salaries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian?
Yep, Sam.
I had a comment. I've actually been attending the rec meetings and I second what Kristin is saying. There's a lot of a lot of things going on there and I applaud the efforts that Tim and his team are doing to stay flexible and and keep on top of the daily changing conditions here and position the department to come out of this as quickly and as effectively as possible. And I think also I've listened in on the advisory meetings in the last several weeks here. And again, they have this one very thoroughly. I have great confidence in what they're recommending here.
Brian, if I may?
Go ahead, Lisa.
I just want to be very careful and this isn't isn't just relative to recreation, but as a whole, some of the things we're saying about fluff and budgets and that. Every department that took a two and a half percent cut on this, maybe it wasn't necessarily staff, but it everybody took a hit and everybody got hurt by this. And I think it's almost, I could, I worry that department heads that agreed to do this, that was a hard thing for them to do to find things in their budget. I I disagree that it's fluff to find things in their budget, to be able to do this, to to meet the requirement of what we asked them to do. I just want all the employees to know that because we may be speaking about one board, one committee, a minute taker or whatnot, it doesn't mean that everybody took a cut, had it in their budget, and it was an easy cut for them to make. So I just want to acknowledge that as we move forward because we're, you know, we focused a lot on on Youth and Family Services, you know, recreation, and it's not to say that that none of these cuts across the board weren't hard. But I worry some of the the comments I've heard from employees from the last meeting versus furloughing or not furloughing and new positions we may or not add now, it it makes other departments fearful that they could be on a chopping block down the road as well. So I just, I want to be clear that that all departments worked very hard to to take the two percent. Some it may have been easier. Maybe they did have, you know, office supplies or something they could cut. But I just don't think it was easy, the two percent for anybody per se. Maybe it was harder for some, absolutely. And I'm not disacknowledging that. But any, I just want our employees to know that that we appreciate what they did.
Yeah, and Brian, I'll follow up on that. This isn't, again, I I said this at our last meeting. I, the, the, you know, the the answer you get depends on how the, on the question you ask. You know, we're talking about about looking for cuts from a budget that was approved by all of us in February because it was completely reasonable. That budget was and and is completely reasonable. But a lot changed between February and now. And I still think that what is missing from the discussion, I mean, it was interesting. You know, the the advisory committee wasn't there yesterday, but but the Board of Selectment was. You know, with the with the housing production plan, and it was eye opening for me. I mean, incredible amount of data, but the thing that was most eye opening for me was the data that pointed out, and again, this is data that was accumulated before the pandemic hit and the and the the economic consequences that have flowed flowed from that. And that is that almost thirty percent of the households in Southborough are what the state classifies as cost burdened, which means that more than thirty percent of the income for those households goes towards housing. And so and it not surprisingly, it disproportionately falls on people under thirty five, seniors and people on fixed income. And so this exercise wasn't picking two percent out of the out of the air. It it was a response to the pandemic. And and I I hear the discussion and I don't disagree with what Kathy said and and what Kristen said in terms of of rec. Believe me, I'm, you know, Tim was here the other night, does a terrific job for the the town. But there's another side to this equation. And I still think as part of this discussion that the taxpayers, particularly the, what do they, what does the state call them, cost burden taxpayers are aren't being factored in enough to this discussion. I I agree. It is, it is, it is in a in a vacuum unfair for someone to lose some hours. It's unfair that people, you know, have lost their jobs in Southborough. That's unfair, too. It's unfair that folks are cost burdened in their their homes. That's unfair as well. And that's the balance I'm trying to strike in looking at these things. And and, I mean, I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to litigate all of them. It's just, other than the eight hundred dollars for Brian, you know, none of these items strike me as, oh, my goodness, if we don't have these in our budget, the the quality of life in Southborough is going to be adversely affected. I think we can live fine with, so I'm making my omnibus argument now. I'm not going to do it for every one of them. I think the town of Southborough would survive fine in two thousand twenty one with some minor reductions. Somebody might have to take notes. There might have to be some training that's delayed, like training in 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 offices and industries all over the country because of this pandemic. But the other side of the equation here are the people in Southborough, particularly those who find themselves unemployed through no fault of their own, through, you know, who are who are cost burdened. The percentage really surprised me and I I still think that that part of the equation is being lost in this discussion. So Healy out.
Brian, if I may?
Go ahead, Dan.
So I I will respectfully disagree with Marty only on one point, the fact that people's lives in Southborough won't be affected if we don't, you know, if we just, they won't be affected. You know, with these cuts, I think they would. In particular, I think recreation, youth and family and fire. Those three in particular, I think their families could be very well affected if we don't restore those and and for at least those three, and and I think the treasurer one is probably pretty easy, too. Uh, I fully support what advisory is suggesting to do.
And Brian, could I add to that, too? Marty, you know, I I certainly, I know people who've been affected already by COVID situation and I feel great sympathy empathy for people who are struggling now. I think we've actually done a good job in terms of coming up with a number that is under one percent for tax increase. I don't recall a year and Mark or Brian Valentine can correct me, but that we've actually done this in my recent memory here. So I think we've worked hard to be sympathetic to those issues and to try to keep the financial pressure down to the minimum amount possible here, given other things that need to be done. So I think we've gone a long distance in the direction we're going. Obviously, you can always do more, but I think it's a judgment call in terms of where you where you draw the line there. And I think this set of recommendations is a reasonable compromise.
Brian, if I may add one other thing, just quickly. So I know that we're talking in under a one percent budget, but we're coming back in the fall. And I I would like the taxpayers to be aware of potentially what that percentage could be in the fall. Maybe it's small, maybe it's not small, depending on the decisions they make. But I think a lot of taxpayers are going to come into this town meeting thinking it's under a one percent and that's it for the year and it's great, and it could be far different in the fall. So I think we we need to have something that the taxpayers can see that this is a budget and operations. This isn't, you know, any cap, any major capital or any of those other things that may be coming forward. So I I think we need to be fair to the taxpayers and let them know there's more coming in the fall.
So I'd like to add one more thing to to Marty. So, and I know you know this, but we agreed with a hundred thirty five out of one sixty, so we, you know, we were what, eighty, ninety percent of the way there. So it's not what we haven't agreed to, fairly significant cuts to the budget that was approved pre pandemic. So we didn't try to add back a hundred sixty, it was only twenty five. And we really thought these were meaningful things to add back. They meant more than what the numbers actually show.
All right, I'm going to, anything else specific to?
Yeah, Brian, one thing is, and Kathy, you might know the number, but I don't think there's much left on the Fall Town meeting in terms of stuff that would affect the F Y twenty one tax rate. I think there's a couple of capital items, but those affect F Y twenty two. So I don't know of anything that's going, would increase the rate. Kathy, can you think of it?
I agree. So Lisa, what's on there, at least what we know about is going to be bonded, so it's not going to affect this year twenty one.
I'm not sure that's entirely true, Kathy, simply because we don't know what we don't know at this point.
I said, I said what we know, what we.
That's fair, but but I think that, you know, capital planning did leave a, you know, a another vehicle for consideration for the fall. Whether that comes to fruition or not remains to be seen and you know, we'll know more, you know, probably in another couple of months as to what the state intends to do with their shortfall and how much they intend to absorb and how much they intend to give us. So we may be setting a budget right now that looks good. But, you know, I I I don't think we're 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 setting the ceiling. I think we're just looking at the floor right now.
All right, I'm just want to keep on going on to the other department budgets. I don't know if anyone wanted to mention anything on planning. I assume everybody can still see my screen, okay? Correct?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So planning at two thousand two hundred and thirty nine is looking to be added in for G I S training. Any comments on that? Treasurer, the eight hundred dollars to stay with four tax bills instead of transitioning to three. Personally, I think this one makes sense. Agreed. Next, Youth and Family Services. Restored the cost of counseling requested by Sarah Castle. This also introduces the talk on start dates. Kathy, you had proposed a September first start date. Apparently, Youth and Family Services had agreed to that.
They did. They met yesterday and voted for that.
Compared to, I think our boards. I think our last position on it was January first start date, correct?
Yes, it was.
We're split on that, three to two. And lastly, fire.
Can I ask Chelsea Melonowski to talk for a minute about this one because she worked with Chief Achilles on this one? So you might want to to hear what she's got to say about this one.
Thank you. So I did talk to Chief Achilles about this and one of the things that impacted his operating budget for F Y twenty one was as a result of him increasing and therefore the increase to the.
People, please mute if you're not. People, please mute if you're not, Chelsea, everyone else besides Chelsea mute, please. Including everybody in the audience. Go ahead, Chelsea, sorry.
Thank you. So he, so as a result of the ambulance revenue increases, that operating expense line had to increase for the billing because it's a contingency fee. So that impacted his FY21 budget. And obviously, we want them to continue to collect over a hundred thousand dollars more year over year. So that was kind of the rationale behind adding back in the fifteen thousand for the fire department.
Brian, can I ask one question?
Go ahead, Lisa.
So on Youth and Family, that's kind of unclear to me. Restored the cost of counseling requested for Sarah. Kathy or Chelsea or anybody from Advisory, do you want to touch on exactly what that is? Because it's very unclear. I'm sure it's a simple answer, but what type of counseling?
Kathy, you're on mute.
So I'm reading directly from an email she sent me, Lisa, when I asked the same question. So she had in her budget money for her own clinical consultation that she needs to do her job. So she actually has that consultation. So she said, they basically took money out of that and took money out of mileage. She said, I'd rather, I really would like the consultation to come back because I can't do it without the money there and I need it. The mileage, they believe, is fine because you're not gonna be going to the schools as much as they were, at least for now. So she was okay with that piece of it. But she really, really wanted to get the clinical consultation back into her budget.
You know, they're the ones, you know, there's some departments that really just don't have much in their budget. This is a small one too. So it's just hard to find things to cut. So they, you know, they absolutely did the exercise like they were asking. This was kind of the only place they could go.
Okay, thank you.
So Brian, I don't know if, but Kalenda supports adding back in Recreation, Treasurer, Youth and Family and Fire.
Recreation, Treasurer, Youth and Family. All right. This is kind of why I wanted to vote them individually, because I think we're gonna get five different options here. But not add in and add in, so.
I support all of them, Brian.
No, it's good to get, I just was getting a sense of where we're, that's where I currently am.
So Dan, if I told you that Karina Quinn, her current admin assistant, she's really, she really thinks has got a lot of potential. And apparently, we've got a dearth of GIS trained people in this town. So she really wants to get someone trained in GIS to be able to use that skill in this town and apparently thinks it's really needed. So she was really disappointed to have to take that one out.
And was your, was Advisory unanimous on that one?
Yeah, we were unanimous on all of these, all six of them.
On all of them?
Yep.
Okay.
Dan, I would also add, I've actually had some GIS questions and gone to Karina about it. And she has said, you know, I just don't have the training to answer that. We've got a great resource there in terms of information on many layers in that GIS system that I think we've got a lot of mileage out of, if we've got somebody who's skilled at using it. I think that's a real investment in the future.
Saying correctly that you're supportive of all of these, is that correct?
I am, yes.
All six, okay. Thank you.
So I just have one other question on the Planning Board. So if Tom gets a person July first, we're not there yet. But if Tom does, wouldn't this be something between Tom and this person would have a knowledge of GIS that they could do in-house training on this?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I would say it's probably unlikely. I don't want to speak for Tom, this is Tim, by the way. I don't want to speak for Tom, but the skills he's looking for are probably more along the lines of desktop support and infrastructure and less application specific.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
All right. I appreciate those explanations. I could definitely be persuaded to support all of them as well, Sam.
All right, in an effort to move things along, to try and move things along. For the Selectmen, I will move that we add the eight hundred dollars back to the Treasurer budget to be able to go with the four tax bills instead of three.
Hey, hey, Brian? I guess you actually finished your motion, but I actually think the, you know, I can count votes. I will move to approve all six of them.
Second.
That's moved seconded. Any other discussion? All right, ready for vote on this? Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
No.
Mr. Kalenda?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Shay is no. It's three to two passes. So that is, this is the budget to be proposed at town meeting on Saturday?
Brian, did you not like one or more, or you just didn't like the idea as a whole?
You know, there were a couple of others that I could have gone along with, but in an effort to, I could count votes as well. And just so we're not here until nine o'clock, voting on everything, let's just keep things moving along. There's a lot of other things, there are several things here that I like. I think there's, personally, I think there's several things here, if not everything, that is going to, I think a motion is gonna come into play at the town meeting. And I think it's, a lot of them are gonna carry despite opinions I might have. And at the end of the day, I'll gladly pay my tax bill and move on. But I think I do agree with Mr. Healy that there's another group that we need to keep in consideration here as well. So, and it's.
I like how Mr. Healy moved all six and then voted no, that was a good.
That's.
That's strategy.
Yeah.
Hey, I know my Roberts rules of order.
Well said, Marty.
Do we need to have any more discussion on start dates for employees? Or has that all been resolved with these votes? I see Ms. Brascio say yes.
So I could live with the change on some of these start dates. I, and again, this doesn't take against any department because I supported all of these positions. It's just when the positions come into effect. I know, and again, as you said, Brian, I know that that town meeting is ultimately gonna decide. I could support the majority of these to some level. Youth and Family is still one I would have preferred in October first date. I've said this before. That's one that I don't know, that I could budge on only because we don't know. We have the opportunity to, I still believe, make use of some of the employees we have. I understand the confidentiality. I get that piece, but from what we've been hearing at some of the past meetings, it's the admin stuff that's bogging Sarah down. It's stuff like that, that I think we have the opportunity to use something. I worry come the fall that, you know, there's gonna be bigger issues for us to deal with. But I think the next two months are gonna be very telling. I still worry about receipts and everything else. So I could potentially budge on a couple, but that's one that that I personally, I could do a ten one, but I can't do sooner because I'd like to have the Fall Town Meeting potentially under our belt before we just have a better idea of where we're at. I could split the police on, I could definitely do that. And I could also do IT for July first, because I worry Tom won't have an opportunity to take any time off this summer as well. So.
So can I, can I just explain how we got to nine one, because it might help? So Advisory discussed nine one and ten one, because, you know, ten one would be halfway in between, right? And then John Rooney, who is just passionate about this department, spent a lot of time over the weekend talking to Sarah and Sue Bucka. In fact, he talked to Sarah, I guess, at three o'clock in the morning because Sarah was up all night worrying about something. John had a deposition for someone in Europe and had to get up early, early. And John proposed nine one. So therefore, their board then met on Monday and talked about nine one. They didn't talk about nine one and ten one, they talked about nine one. So that's why they voted on nine one. So therefore, Advisory knew that when we met later. So I don't think anybody's gonna lose sleep over nine one or ten one, but we've decided nine one as a practical matter so that when we went to town meeting, we wouldn't have Youth and Family Services stand up and say, we really want nine one, when we had voted on ten one. So that was the practical reason that we voted on nine one.
And I will conclude, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Dan, go ahead.
No, I just think I was a seven one guy and I will continue to support Youth and Family Services. I think it's a critical now, I think extending it to nine one, if that gets us to consensus for town meeting and they have agreed to it, I clearly think that's a good move and I support it.
And Advisory was trying to compromise, Dan, so that's, you know, we were seven one too. But we were trying to propose something that we thought we might get a majority vote on.
And I agree, Kathy, the last thing I want to see is a four hour town meeting when nobody wants to be together in a crowd, even though there's gonna be distancing, there's gonna be, you know, you need to have a quorum and there's gonna be a crowd. And so, you know, I think great effort has been made at all hours of the night to try to get people to come to a consensus. No one's gonna be happy with everything. I think hopefully all of us will be happy with most of the things. And that consensus will get us a unified front at town meeting, which I think benefits everyone.
And Kathy, I also have been following this one closely and I originally advocated seven one. It seemed to me nine one was a reasonable compromise there. I've been attending the Youth Commission meetings. I listened to Sarah's report about what's going on there in terms of particularly the near term pressures on the pandemic. Again, all sorts of various family pressures, whether it's financial, social, domestic, et cetera, et cetera. I think there's a real need to move quickly on this to support our citizens. So that's why I thought nine one was the right solution to move this forward.
And I know that Lisa is very sympathetic to this department. That's not why she would prefer ten one, I hear what she's saying. I just still think that if, you know, something really goes south in the fall and we really have to reassess and find saving someplace else, that we still wouldn't go here. And that's why I guess I'm not worried about nine one versus ten one and a town meeting in between.
Brian, is something we should be looking at on the screen to make a motion on?
I don't have anything specific to the hire dates.
So with the higher dates and this twenty five thousand in there, just somebody knows the projected year-over-year increase in taxes for a resident is point nine percent exactly.
And Kathy, can you share what Advisory did on higher dates? Votes unanimous?
And so, seven one for IT part-time was unanimous, seven oh. Splitting the police was unanimous, again, in an effort to compromise with Board of Selectmen. Youth and Family Services, I still have to keep repeating, there were two people who were not in support of the position, period. Although I think as time went on, they got closer, but they never quite got there. And so therefore, the vote for one of those two would have voted for ten one, but didn't like nine one. So we had everyone but one vote for nine one.
And Kathy, if I may, I was the one that voted against nine one. And I'm not gonna repeat everything that Lisa just alluded to, but that's essentially what my argument was. I'm not, not because it isn't a need, but because of the sustainability of the position. And I think that extra month gives us another, a little bit more time to look at it and use some of the resources that we currently have.
So Brian, I would like to move on behalf of the Board of Selectmen exactly what Advisory approved.
Motion was made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded for discussion, any other discussion?
If Lisa is gonna vote against us because of Youth and Family Services, you may want to split the motion?
Well, I would suggest, I would like to leave the motion as is. And if it fails, then we'd have to take another one.
All right. Any other discussion? Ms. Brascio?
Nay.
Mr. Healy?
I know everybody was baiting me by saying compromise so much. I'll vote aye.
It was aye. Mr. Kalenda?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Shay is no. Passes three to two. So we've earned agreement on the budget and the hiring dates. Hang on one second. One more thing that I did want to touch on, Kathy, was the Finn Boiler article. I think that is the sole item now where there is non-consensus between your committee and our board. Do you agree with that? All right, so I do also know that Superintendent Martin O. and Katora Martin have joined in as well. Our board's position, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but our board had supported the Finn Boiler article back in January, February timeframe as we were finalizing the warrant, correct?
Yes.
All right, I guess I'll start. Is there any change in position on board members with respect to the Finn Boiler article?
Not yet.
Not hearing any. All right, so we're in disagreement on this, Kathy.
Can I interject for just a moment, Brian?
Yes.
So Advisory was also initially supportive when School Committee came in front of us. It was our understanding the boiler was on its last legs and had to be replaced in the summer. And you may recall that the School Committee took it off the warrant for a while and then it came back. So we started asking some questions. In the meantime, Capital Planning Committee was formed and it was on their list, but they did not opine on it because we thought it was not going to be on the warrant. So they haven't had a chance to weigh in. So since then, I've talked to Superintendent Martin O. and I've talked to Katora about it in separate conversations. And so this is what, this is why Advisory voted unanimously not to support it for this town meeting. It doesn't appear to be on its last legs, according to Superintendent Martin O. It should last another five to seven years. We also didn't have a chance to look at the engineering report to see what it said. So Ms. Martin called me and she gave me the reasons that they put it back on. And those reasons were that they'd spent fifty thousand dollars on engineering work to get the application ready for MSBA where it was approved. It was approved because the project, the current boiler is twenty years old and they will approve it if it's at least twenty years, I think it's twenty one years. That was one reason. Number two, they are concerned about the reimbursement rate from MSBA being reduced because of the effect of the pandemic on the state's finances. And they also had talked to whoever was gonna install it and he assured them that he would be able to get it done completely before the start of school in August. So those were her reasons that the School Committee voted to put it back on the warrant. But I'd still say the main reason not to do this is, I think, we're cutting the legs out from under capital planning. We formed capital planning so they could help us with our long-term budget problem, which is mostly capital. And I can remember when I used to chair the previous version of it, how frustrating it was to do a lot of work and then seem to be ignored by Advisory and/or Board of Selectmen. So I just don't want. So I just don't want to start that again. I want to listen to capital planning, let them do their research and come back with recommendations. So if it has to wait a year, since by the time capital planning comes in front of you, it'll be too late to do it this summer, I don't think there's any hurt in that. But if it really can wait five years or six years, that means a lot to this budget.
If I could just interject here, Kathy. So I, I don't know where the five to seven-year remaining life came from. And I have a lot of respect for Superintendent Martino. I think he's a great school superintendent. I don't know what his HVAC and plumbing engineer qualifications are. I did reach out to them and I, as part, so this is all part of an MSBA app package and they're getting reimbursements for this. And there have been documents submitted to support that grant application. There's an engineering study that was done and the engineering study has the line in there that boilers are over 20 years old and require replacement. There are also some additional improvements that were identified in that engineering report that they're looking to implement. And I don't disagree with your comments about the capital budget committee. And I think this is a process, though, that did start before that group was recomposed. Efforts have been made to get documents into the MSBA to document the need for the project. I don't think the MSBA is in a position where they're going to okay boiler replacements when there's still seven remaining years' life on, on those components. So personally, I think this one, I, I'm not convinced not to move forward with this one at this time. And I understand your point too about, you know, with engineering that has been done to date, but, you know, being in the engineering profession, if you put, you know, the engineering plans away and put them in a drawer for a year, two or three, it's not as though you pull them out the next day and everything is still fresh in that person's mind and the same people are ready to work on it and you pick up right where you left off. There's a, there's a relearning process that has to take place. There's the potential when you're dealing with plumbing and HVAC issues, code changes could come into play to, that result in changes in the design and additional engineering fees you have to pay to, to account for that. So personally, I'm, I'm still prepared to move forward with recommending support of this article. I don't know whether my board members feel and whether what I've said changes anybody on advisory's committee's mind as well. So.
It's not in the budget. Let me make sure everybody understands that. So the tax impact is not there because Brian Valentine didn't think it was going to be there. So there's no money in the budget for it. It's going to be financed. So it probably doesn't have much of an impact, but it will have something. So I hate, I really hope, you know, I like the idea of the budget being under 1%, I think it sounds good. So my guess is this will push it over. I think Brian might have a backup plan for what he can do to not officially put it in and kind of work with it later when the tax rate gets set. But just to be clear, there's nothing in the debt line of the budget for, because we were 21 to take care of this.
All right. I'd like to hear from Superintendent Martino and Chairwoman Martin about the school committee's view of this.
I agree with, once again, Mr. Stivers.
Amazing. You're going out on a high here, Dan.
Really, this is, this is, this is an interesting meeting.
Thank you for inviting me to your meeting this evening and I'd be happy to speak about Finn Boilers. It's one of my favorite topics to discuss as superintendent. So I just want to point out that the school, school committee does have a six-year capital plan. And this part of the capital plan is the replacement of the Finn Boiler as well as the nary roofs, the Finn roof and the trotty roof. And that's mapped out over, again, a six-year period. In January of 2019, we submitted statements of interest, MSBA's accelerated repair project for the Finn roof, the trotty roof and the Finn Boiler. The project that was accepted to be considered was the Finn Boiler and it met the criteria of age, which was 20 years, 20 years or older. And the age of a project or a boiler or a roof depends on how many submissions there are to MSBA's accelerated repair project. For example, a roof is typically 20 years, but because so many districts submitted SOIs for roofs, the roofs actually age had to be greater than 27 years. So it's a bit of a moving target. So the SOI was accepted by the MSBA project. We then were invited into the program. We engaged in schematic design work, which was submitted to the MSBA board on January 2nd. MSBA board met on February 13th, 2020 and decided that it was a viable project to move forward and funded the project at a reimbursement rate of 36.89%. We were in line, as, as many of you indicated, to move forward with the project, bring it to the town meeting in March. And there really, at that point, was no, not a concern. Then we had the pandemic. So the part of the conversation, the Gantt chart that we worked on, there was some concern about timing, making sure that this project could be fit in before the heating season, you know, in the months of November and December. And it was indicated that would be a tight timeline, even with a March town meeting date. With the pandemic and the pushing out of the time of the town meetings, we grew more concerned about would we be able to feasibly fit this project in before the heating season? And we continued having conversations with onsite project manager around the feasibility as well with a contractor. And we've had a lot of conversations about what if this project does not go through? You know, what, what's the risk? So basically on June 3rd, this was after I spoke with Kathy. We had one final meeting around, is this even feasible if town meeting moves ahead as scheduled on June 13th? And they, at that time, proposed a temporary solution if the project wasn't able to be completed in, in terms, in terms of the heating season. The risk really is, you know, my comment around the five years is it's unpredictable. The risk really is if we do not, if the town votes not to move the project forward, the risk is, could it last another five years? And it possibly could. And that was my general comment. I, I agree with you, Chairman Shea. I'm not an HVAC expert. But I also know that the boiler did meet the threshold for the project and the, the project was approved through the board, MSBA board, who wouldn't approve a project if they didn't think it was viable. What, what we, my recommendation to the school committee is what we know now is the cost of the project. We know the reimbursement rate. And really, I, I can't project what the boiler will do in the next five years or the costs that it will be to maintain it. And I also don't, there's no guarantee that MSBA that will accept this project again. So again, those are just the risks. Those are just the facts. And the facts on the table tonight are that the MSBA has accepted this Finn Boiler project. The town of Southboro will receive 36.89% reimbursement and the total cost of the project to the taxpayer is a little over $624,000. The school committee will be meeting tomorrow evening to take a final position. And again, I, I think that is important also for me to note that it's really the will of the committee, not necessarily the superintendent's ultimate decision around to move the project forward.
Brian, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, Superintendent, if, and, and risk seems to me the determining factor here. If the, if the boiler went out this winter and we had passed on getting the reimbursement, obviously we'd have to deal with the boiler. Would we be able to get reimbursement or are we then on our own?
No. So, so this is, if, if the project could not take place this, before the heating season, before the new fiscal year, the contractor is not going to honor his original bid. So we would have to go out to bid. We would incur an additional cost, but MSBA still would support the reimbursement amount that they allocated to this project.
And, and how long would that carry? Would that carry through the entire five years or?
No, just through the, through the year. I think it's, I can find the exact date, but it's approximately a year.
Okay.
So if we did not, you know, if, if, if the project did not move forward and it was not installed beginning this summer, then they would install it in the spring, but we would have to do some additional work in terms of going out to bid and procurement and so forth.
But, but if it went beyond the spring, then the reimbursement would be, at least, at least the existing reimbursement would be lost?
Correct.
Okay.
And we'd have to get back in the queue with MSBA.
Got it. Thanks.
So Brian, may I?
Go ahead, Andrew.
So I, so I think what Kathy was saying, it kind of fits in with, with what Superintendent's saying. So, you know, we're, I think we're looking at doing this next spring, giving the Capital Planning Committee an opportunity to look at it. And, you know, also for me, the risk of getting it done this year with who knows what next wave of COVID might happen and construction might stop, pushing it off to the spring, we have the guaranteed MSBA rate. The only difference is we might have it to get another bid. I think the risk of having, starting construction, having to stop due to some kind of COVID-related wave is riskier than, you know, the next bid issue in next spring.
Brian?
Go ahead, Tim.
I'd like to get a better understanding of our budgets three, four years down the line and what this might do to what is already a tight situation, especially in regards to the need, the potential needs for overrides. Do we have anything, any projections along those lines? So I think that that's also something that needs to be looked at before we ask town meeting to approve this.
We do, and it's very close in a couple of years to an override.
But does that factor into the, is that factor the Finn Boiler in?
Yes. It's on the capital plan. So yes, it does. It's, it's in there.
Kathy, when you were talking about the, the capital planning weighing in, it, it, it seems incredibly risky to me to extend this past the spring. So are, 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 when you're talking about capital planning, are you thinking about, is that five to seven years sticking in your mind that that's a possibility? Because that, that strikes me as, as not a risk that I'm interested in taking. We've got locked-in reimbursement, which is, if, if I'm hearing the numbers right, is about $300,000 to $400,000. And it strikes me that, that's, that's an awful lot of money to, to, to roll the dice on.
Oh, I agree. I don't want to lose that money. So no, I don't know that it's five to seven years. I'm just saying good capital planning could be a chance to beat it. One new piece of information that I think Superintendent Martino just said, or somebody, maybe Brian said it, is that I didn't know the engineering report said that it was on its last legs. And I talked to Superintendent Martino. He didn't, he didn't tell me that. So that's new news.
I didn't say that it was on its last legs. The report says that the boilers require replacement.
Brian, Shea, are you uncomfortable kicking it to the, to the, to the spring? I mean, obviously, I, I haven't heard anybody indicate that they have an appetite for, for consider, even considering going past that, which again is risking the reimbursement. If that, if I'm wrong about that, maybe somebody can enlighten me. But, but before we get there, Brian, would you, do you have a comfort level doing in the spring? Or do you think that there's, there, there is compelling reason to get it done now?
You know, I, I would just assume, continue with it now. You know, that path has been started through MSBA to get this approved now. There's a schedule in place that everybody's working towards. The owner project manager is on board that's been assigned to this. I, I'm not comfortable stopping it right now personally. And I'm certainly not going to sit here and say that the boilers are going to fail this winter during heating season. But I also know that if they do fail this winter in the heating season, you know, you're now paying a premium to do something on an emergency basis versus a, you know, designed, planned and bid type of a project. So, you know, there's certainly much more of a risk. What percentage risk that is, I can't say. I don't think anybody can say. But I would prefer to stay with the, the track that we're on.
I think the MSBA reimbursement is still going to be in place if we kick it to the spring. That doesn't seem to be an issue there. I'm sure it's on a fiscal year basis, starting 7-1. The contractor, it sounds like he might change his price if we kick it from what Mr. Martino said. So no, Mr. Healy, I am not saying let's wait five to seven years. I'm saying, but having heard that, it looks like he gives us a little time to really vet this and get it on the plan and let capital planning come back to an advisory with their recommendation.
Sam?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Brian, that there's certainly a lot of risk here and getting too far off track with it. I do remain interested in seeing what the Capital Planning Committee might have to say. Sounds to me like there's some uncertainty about the actual condition of the current boiler. And it'd be useful to know, you know, how, how bad or good shape it's in. On the other hand, I think that I'm always interested in looking at additional financing opportunities for something like this or reimbursement from other sources. And so if capital planning, which is a group that's done a good job on several other projects here, I think could provide valuable input. So I'm comfortable with sending it to them to get some feedback and then reconsidering for spring.
Brian, if I may?
Go ahead, Lisa.
This, this is actually a question for Greg. So Greg, if by chance it was put off until the fall town meeting, how would that affect the schedule of, of getting it done and still falling within the guidelines of the reimbursement?
To, so I think there, it's a great question. I think if it's put on the fall town meeting, that just pushes it off to the spring, which again, incremental cost would be, again, whatever the, the contractor rates, the, you know, would be at that time. So that would be the incremental cost.
Okay, thank you.
So. Go ahead, Greg.
So I think there are two pathways, right? There are three pathways, really. There, there's the pathway to continue and have the boiler installed beginning this summer if, if it's approved, approved by town meeting members. Another pathway is waiting till the fall and then starting the work in the spring of '21 and getting that project done before, before the end of the summer. And then the, the third pathway is holding and taking on that risk of, you know, again, I'm not, I think, you know, Chairman Shea, you're right, I'm not an HVAC expert, but there's some risk of not getting that reimbursement and having the boiler maybe fail at some point when we least need it to fail.
I agree. Brian, if I could just ask one, one other quick question?
Yes.
Okay. So I see we have the chair of the, the school committee there and I know they've obviously discussed this at length as well. I'd just like to hear from Ms. Martin as far as her thoughts on this.
Yeah, sure. So the, the committee all along has been very supportive of this project. It's been, you know, pretty long-term application process and a very involved process getting this done. The planning for it has, has been, has come at a cost about, I believe about $50,000 to get the plans in place and do the application. My understanding is that if we were to have to redo the process later, obviously we'd have to pay that amount again. And, you know, as far as the sentiments of the school committee, we've always anticipated just moving forward with this and, and we've all been very supportive of it. A $300,000, I believe it's about $365,000 grant, you know, doesn't come along every day, especially for something that we will need to be doing at some point in the not-so-distant future. So. So um, so everything has, you know, until the pandemic hit, has fallen into place.
Thank you.
Thanks. You know, one point I want to make too, and you know, Lisa's mentioned it a couple of times, I think probably since late or since the winter, maybe even in the fall. There's all, there's been talk of having a fall town meeting, take up some capital items in the fall town meeting. I'm, I just want to say, we have zero certainty that we're even going to be able to have a fall town meeting in a different type of gathering environment than, than what we're living in right now. So to be banking, you know, we've, yes, we talked about that fall town meeting, but we talked about that fall town meeting in a time before this pandemic hit. And um, I have zero degree of certainty that we'll be in a position to hold that. It's, you know, it's all speculative at this point, but with flu season hitting, compounding things, second waves and all that, nobody, nobody knows anything, so.
Yeah, Brian, do we need a, do we need a vote? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at a three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar bird in the hand and I'm, I'm kind of uncomfortable playing around with it.
So we, so as far as it stands now, the only, if there's going to be a vote, it would be a different vote than our current position to support. So is there a motion to the contrary, contrary to our previous position?
I do not so move.
Hearing none, we are, we're still supportive of this, of this article, Kathy, so.
So let me just poll advisory real quick and see if anybody, it was a seven oh vote. Is, is anyone on advisory changed their mind based on what they heard from?
If I may. Um, so one of the reasons why I voted um, not to support this was because I thought it would help our long-term capital plan for the next five to seven years. But if we're talking about this town meeting versus next town meeting, I think I, I don't see a huge advantage to us pushing this out. And I think the risk is not worth it. So I would change my vote to support this um, article.
And Kathy, also after listening to the arguments, I also would be inclined to change my vote too.
And so it's to Judy?
Yes, I would change mine also to support.
Everyone wants to hear, um, Andrew?
Would uh, support a fall town beating or winter town meeting or next spring town meeting, whenever we can have it. I think it should be a project on next spring with the same amount of money and reimbursement, but uh, not necessarily starting immediately.
Tim?
If this does not have a useful lifespan of five to seven years, then I would change my vote.
Okay, so um, I'm going to make a motion um, for advisory to support the school-sponsored article to replace the Finn boiler um, immediately after July first.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, I'll do a roll call. Judy?
Bud's eye.
Cook, no?
Andrew, aye.
Malinowski, aye.
Okay.
Martel, aye.
Aff, no.
Okay, so that's four, two um, in favor of it. So it looks like we're in agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm hoping that future projects go much more smoothly in non-pandemic uh, time. Thank you.
Uh. All right, anything else? With advisor committee? Are you guys going to sign out?
I think we're going to sign out.
Obviously more than welcome to watch us as we undertake appointment of a new town accountant, if you'd like.
Oh, that, that's actually interesting. Um, so I think we're going to adjourn our meeting. If anybody wants to stay, they can, um, as long as we don't have a forum. Um, so motion to adjourn?
I'm agree adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, roll call?
Bud's eye.
Cook, aye.
Malinowski, aye.
Martel, aye.
Aff, aye.
Thank you guys. See you Saturday.
All right. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, on to our next uh, item on the agenda, scheduled appointments. No, I'm sorry, the consent agenda, appointment of new town accountant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, you're going to vote against it, Dan, now?
I'm not old, Marty.
Any discussion?
If I vote against it.
Hearing none, Ms. Brascio.
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Mr. Kalenda?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Shay's aye. I move to adjourn?
Second.
Move seconded, um, Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Mr. Kalenda?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Shay, aye as well. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Night, folks. Bye-bye.
Well done.
Can you unmute?